Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the Moreno Valley City Council on October 17th at 5:35. The first special presentation will be a proclamation recognizing Moreno Valley Friends of the Library. If we can have the representatives from the Library Commission, Friends of the Library, or anyone else that would like to come up for this presentation, join me at the podium. Okay, are you ready? Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. The Friends of the Moreno Valley Library dedicate their time, efforts, and the funds from their book sales to programs that benefit all of Moreno Valley. The programs underwritten and funded by the Friends of the Library keep students ready throughout the summer, making our schools more efficient. The programs give children the experiences that will develop a lifelong love of reading, and they provide our residents with the tools to build a highly competitive workforce that will continue to attract businesses and drive economic growth here in Moreno Valley. The Friends of the Library contribute to all of these factors in the community, but supporting the library is also helping to increase the perceived stability and security of the community. Our library commissioners and our volunteers have achieved so much, and with the added support and awareness of the important work that they do, we as a community can come together to achieve even more for our library, our city, and our people. Library commissioners and Friends of the Library, please accept this proclamation on behalf of the city. Okay, so I'm going to present this to you.
Thank you. Mona?
Would you like to say something?
I would. Pull us up a little bit higher. Thank you, City Council, Mayor. We just want to say we want to thank you, first of all, the city of Moreno Valley, for really looking out and recognizing the library. And this proclamation is just a small token of how we feel about our Friends of the Library. When we came on about a year ago, the one thing, one of our goals was to make sure we had, we were more visible in the community, and we actually got to know our Friends of the Library. And I was astounded by the amount of time, effort, and quality work that they do at the library. But you don't see them. They're kind of like behind the scenes. And so when we're speaking to them, and we had a little meet and greet Saturday at my home, and they're just some phenomenal people. There's those that been in here since, been in Moreno Valley, actually grew up in Moreno Valley. You know, their families were actually settled here, and I didn't know that, but they're just wonderful people, and we just want to just really thank them for their time and effort and the thousands of hours they put in, which nobody sees. And they do it with a smile on their face, as you can see, and we just want to thank them for that. Before I turn over to, I'm the vice chair of the Library Commission. Before I turn over to our chair, I would like to just acknowledge those in the audience that are Friends of the Library. Friends of the Library, could you please stand? Thank you. So we're just thrilled that we're able to give them the proclamation because it's well overdue. Mona? Oh, okay.
It's your day. Moreno Valley, friends of the library. We are astounded. This is beautiful, and we thank you. And we do feel that our work is very worthwhile. And can I give a plug?
Yes, you can.
If anyone is interested in being, if anyone is interested in being a part of the Moreno Valley Friends of the Library, just Google Moreno Valley Friends of the Library. All right? Thank you.
Mona, you hold this because I'm big. I'm taller. Get some folks over here, too. A little bit more. And Barry in the back, if you can kind of put over here. Stand over right this way. She's blocking you now.
Come on. You've been here a long time, too.
Wonderful. There it gets focus. All right. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I have never met you.
We have. We have, yeah.
Not very often.
No, but... Thank you so much, Friends of the Library. Our next presentation will be the Officer of the Second Quarter, Kenneth Hoon, and Mayor Gutierrez. And who do we have? Lieutenant Clark?
Lieutenant Clark's here on behalf of the chief.
Thank you. We'll be recognizing Officer Kenneth Hoon.
Would you like me to read it up there?
No, you're good. Okay. So first, we just want to, I just want to say congratulations to Officer Hoon for being the officer of the third quarter, and we're going to have Lieutenant Clark, if you want to go ahead and read us some information about Officer Hoon and how he got selected.
Absolutely. Our officer of the quarter for the second quarter of 2017, the Moreno Valley Police Department, is Officer Ken Hoon. Since his assignment to the Moreno Valley Police Department in 2016, Officer Ken Hoon has shown himself to be a leader and a standout patrol officer. Officer Hoon has been a peace officer for nearly 11 years and has served in a variety of assignments to include patrol, special enforcement teams, and SWAT. He is a driven self-starter who is passionate about his profession and strives to instill that same passion and work ethic in others. Officer Hoon is currently assigned to swing shift patrol, where he enjoys mentoring newer members of the shift. He thrives in doing so, creating teaching moments whenever possible and fostering learning and camaraderie throughout the shift. Officer Hoon proactively pushes his SWAT and tactical expertise upon everyone around him, making all of them and this city better prepared for the threats of today. Officer Hoon is invaluable during critical emergency incidents, such as a recent triple shooting. Hoon was the, one of the first to arrive at the chaotic scene with multiple injured parties and nearly 100 bystanders. Officer Hoon quickly coordinated the efforts of officers in triaging the victims, establishing a crime scene perimeter, and vetting potential witnesses. Officer Hoon's level head and quick thinking contributed significantly to the safe and successful investigation of this incident. These brief examples are representative of Officer Hoon's pride and performance on a daily basis. He has demonstrated he is an asset wherever he is assigned, and his work ethic and drive serve as examples for other deputies to emulate and for Moreno Valley to be proud of. Congratulations, Ken.
And now, as mayor of Moreno Valley, we would like to present to you the certificate of recognition to Officer Kenneth Hoon.
And then would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
This is good. You guys can hear me? I've been in less stressful situations. This is very intimidating. I want to thank the City Council, the sheriff, our chief. Thank you, guys. It's an amazing city. I want to thank my partners. I work some with some of the best people in the world. They're amazing people. The staff at Moreno Valley is amazing as well. Thank you so much.
Did he get his handcuffs?
Yes.
Congratulations, Kenneth Hoon. Our third and final presentation is the Medic Squad Six presentation. Councilmember Ulysses Cabrera will be recognizing Medic Squad Six.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we would like to recognize the newly installed Medic Squad Six of the Moreno Valley Fire Department. Would the Fire Department staff who's present, please join me up here? We have plenty of room. was authorized to hire additional firefighter staff for Medic Squad Six, which was recently placed into service at Towngate Fire Station Six. Approval for this significant enhancement of Fire Department services exemplifies the City Council's commitment to the safety and welfare of the residents of Moreno Valley. The new Medic Squad Six is available for immediate emergency incident response and provides advanced life support care to the critically ill and injured. Squad Six will also provide additional staffing to fires, hazardous materials, rescues, and traffic collision emergencies. Since its incorporation, Medic Squad Six is the first two-person paramedic-staffed resource authorized by City Council and placed into operational service. This resource will provide immediate relief to Towngate Engine Six, which has until now been the sole emergency response unit to respond to approximately 4,300 incidents annually. The City Council of Moreno Valley would like to thank the men and women of the Fire Department and Medic Squad Six for their dedication to the safety and well-being of the people
in our service here in the city of Moreno Valley, they work 72-hour shifts, and within
of Moreno Valley. And I would just like to say, I had the opportunity to go on a ride along with Chief Ahmad, who's
that 72 hours, they can run anywhere up to 18 to 65 calls in a 72-hour period.
not here tonight, but just to see what our firefighters do firsthand and to see that
So we got to be able to train, eat, sleep, maintain our equipment, provide professional
now we have more boots on the ground, it just makes me really happy because they have
service to the community of Moreno Valley, and to our citizens and our customers that
a hard, hard job.
dial 911 for our help, plus with our regular everyday schedules that we handle.
They do really, really good work out there, and it's not easy. So, you know, I'm proud to see, well, to be up here with these gentlemen, and so if
Additionally, our squad is also staffed by seven people. We have a paramedic captain overseeing our program, is Christian Lineman.
we can give them an applause.
Nothing?
We have a paramedic engineer, and a regular paramedic, and the rest of the staff is our
Anyone? Anyone like to say anything?
I'm good.
No? Okay.
Thanks, guys.
firefighter paramedics.
Look forward to running more calls.
If you'd like to go up and greet the rest of the council?
We feel that getting that ALS service out to the city of Moreno Valley enhances our ability to be able to get to, to the folks quickly, within less than five minutes of every call dispatched for us, to be able to give you guys the surviving chance that everybody deserves while they're with us here in the city. The squad is parked out front. The crew can go outside. You guys are more than welcome to crawl through it, sit in it. It's state-of-the-art. It's the best that we could do, provided with the city, what they were so gracious enough for let us to buy and purchase and build. So we thank you guys very much for your support and what you do for us and the city and the communities, and we thank you for being a part of us and as well as part of our team. Thank you.
Thank you very much to our volunteers and our heroes. We really appreciate you here in the city of Moreno Valley. This concludes our special presentations. Our regular City Council meeting will begin in about 10 minutes. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM on October 17, 2017. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Frank Wright, followed by Reverend Dr. Stephen Overton from Moreno Valley Christian Chapel Four Square Church, so please remain standing for the invocation as well.
Everyone, please stand, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings to you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members and everyone. I consider it a real privilege to lead us in the invocation tonight. Dear Father God, you are worthy of all praise and worship and majesty. Thank you for being so generous, gracious, and magnanimous to each and every resident, business, city employee during the, during the almost 33 years that Moreno Valley has existed as a city. Thank you, and please continue to bless our city, mayor, councilperson, city manager, department managers, supervisors, and every city employee that works so diligently, doing the routine, and great things that cause our city to be worthy of honor. Thank you and bless every out-of-the-city person, business, agency, that have enhanced Moreno Valley over the years. Lord, please continue to provide direction, strategy, wisdom, and prudence to all that will in any way become or continue to be ones that help to effect progress, transformation, greatness, and righteousness, so that your continual pleasure, favor, protection, and provision will be faithfully extended in our direction. Help Moreno Valley to continue to be exemplary and even go beyond the good things that have already happened, such as having a city employment rate of 94%, creation of 14,000 jobs over, new jobs, over the last four years, being the third most fiscally strong city in the nation, et cetera. Father, please forgive us where we've come short of measuring up to your expectations and standards as community members, family, husbands, wives, children, teachers, leaders, clergy, neighbors, and city-involved persons. Help us to be sure that you are first place in our lives, that we continually seek your guidance, and have a strong and insatiable desire to please you. Please bless this council meeting tonight, including the participants, the recommendations that will be approved, and necessary business matters. Bless our president, governor, and country in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Overton. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gaiba?
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Jacquez Nares, city clerk.
Martin Kazanowicz, city attorney.
Michelle Dawson, city manager.
Tom DeSantis, assistant city manager.
Mike Lee, economic development director.
Alan Brock, community development director.
Lieutenant Tyler Clark for Chief Joel Antiveros.
Mark Williams, battalion chief, in presence for Chief Ahmad.
Kathleen Sanchez, director of human resources.
Betsy Adams, interim Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Lloyd, interim city engineer.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff and everyone that's here tonight. Just a friendly reminder, we do have Spanish translation services in the back corner, back right-hand corner. If anyone is interested in the feature, the devices can be checked out in the back, in the back of the room. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to remain respectful towards each other, especially to the individuals speaking at the podium. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to only three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business. So if it's an item on the agenda, then I'll ask you to speak on that item when it's called. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda, under the jurisdiction of the City Council, may speak so now. Excuse me, may do so now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the City Council in general. The city clerk will call three names at a time. Please move to the front and be ready as you hear your name. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. City clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we have four.
Okay. Go ahead and call three up at a time.
Bob Palomares, Paul Lobaro, Frank Wright.
Good evening, council, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, staff. Well, good news. AB 890 went down in defeat. Good thing for the state, good thing for the city, good thing for the people of this state and of this city. I know Victoria, Mayor Pro Tembaca worked hard on that, going up to Sacramento with a lot of people in favor of it. You know, the politicians, I would say, and she was fighting for the people for the jobs that it would defeat, and she came out victorious, as the state did the people. So I know the mayor was also involved, so it was a good thing, and I'm proud of that. And it all derived from the World Logistics Center, which is probably the greenest project there is around. I mean, look at Skechers, that's a good example. But, you know, they always try to take the good things down, maybe because it's in Moreno Valley, or maybe because it's Ito Benzivi, the man has, that has contributed so much to this city and lives here, and is one of the biggest taxpayers here. So we always got to stand behind him. The people do, I'm sure, because they know that he's for them. All the jobs, the millions of dollars for the city, you know, we're blessed. So it was good news this morning when I read it in the paper, had a good day at work, and the Redskins won, too. So it was even better. So thank you, and God bless you.
Bob, Paul, followed by Frank, and then Rafael.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and all the city council here. I've been wanting to come, I haven't had a chance, but I'm here, and I just want to thank you guys for being up here, and I pray for you guys, and I pray for clarity, I pray for vision, I pray for boldness, and I pray for courage. But I live in, the kids call it wood in the hood. I'm on Indian and sunny meat, I sell firewood, I sell produce. I've been here 37 years, and I like this city. My daughters say, why do you live there, Dad? Go to the beach where you grew up. Well, this is where God has me, and I want to come and I want to tell you guys that when you have a chance, Mr. Mayor, you're an educated man. You're a teacher, okay? In the evenings, the zombies wake up, okay? And we got within a mile, we got weed shops, we got crazy, we got all kinds of things going, and we do have, God has given us freedom of choice and free will. Nobody puts a gun to our head to do stupid, and everybody in this building, right here, right here, has done stupid. And anybody says they haven't, they're liars. And I'm making, and I'm pointing fingers at me, make a circle around me. But I get down there, I get cutters, I get suicide, I get young girls selling their bodies, I get all kinds of crazy, but they don't want to go to a church, per se church, and we know we're the church. The church is a building. And they share with me a lot of things, and I don't want to undermine their parents because I'm not living there with them. So I share with you guys that whatever that you have, what, whatever God has given you in your mind, to all this thing with the weeds and stuff, we're doing good. This city's doing good. We don't need all that drama. We really don't. And I know that it's tax, and it's money, and it's this and that, but I pray for you guys, and we're not going to lay down, we're not going to bow down, we're not going to sit down. We're going to stand up by the blood of Jesus, and I'm going to pray for you guys, and I pray for our city, and like everybody here, you, you, you put the Fire Department on blast, you put the Sheriff's Department on blast, because they have a job that I don't want to do. Nobody wants to do it, and everybody complains about them, but when they have a problem, who do they call? But right now, I'd like to do that. I like to lift it up for our city, and I want to pray for our city. I want to pray for the youth of America, the youth of this city. Father God, we come to your feet right now in a prayer of thanksgiving, Father. I pray for the mayor, I pray for everyone on the city council, Father, to give them clarity, to give them boldness, to give them vision, Father, that, just like it says in Ezekiel 3:18, that the blood is on our hands if we don't share what we know. So we check...
that it would defeat, and she came out victorious, as the state did, the people. So, I know the mayor was also involved, so it was a good thing, and I'm proud of that. And it all derived from the World Logistics Center, which is probably the greenest project there is around. I mean, look at Skechers, that's a good example. But, you know, they always try to take the good things down, maybe because it's in Moreno Valley, or maybe because it's Ito Benzivi, the man that has contributed so much to this city and lives here, and is one of the biggest taxpayers here. So, we always got to stand behind him. The people do, I'm sure, because they know that he's for them. All the jobs, the millions of dollars for the city, you know, we're blessed. So, it was good news this morning when I read it in the paper, had a good day at work, and the Redskins won too, so it was even better. So, thank you, and God bless you.
Bob, Paul, followed by Frank, and then Rafael.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and all the city council here. I've been wanting to come, I haven't had a chance, but I'm here, and I just want to thank you guys for being up here, and I pray for you guys, and I pray for clarity, I pray for vision, I pray for boldness, and I pray for courage. But, I live in, the kids call it wood in the hood. I'm on Indian and sunny meat, I sell firewood, I sell produce. I've been here thirty-seven years, and I like this city. My daughters say, "Why do you live there, Dad? Go to the beach where you grew up." Well, this is where God has me, and I want to come and I want to tell you guys that when you have a chance, Mr. Mayor, you're an educated man, you're a teacher, okay? In the evenings, the zombies wake up, okay? And we got within a mile, we got weed shops, we got crazy, we got all kinds of things going, and we do have, God has given us freedom of choice and free will. Nobody puts a gun to our head to do stupid, and everybody in this building, right here, right here, has done stupid, and anybody says they haven't, they're liars. And I'm making, and I'm pointing fingers at me, make a circle around me. But, I get down there, I get cutters, I get suicide, I get young girls selling their bodies, I get all kinds of crazy, but they don't want to go to a church, per se church, and we know we're the church. The church is a building. And they share with me a lot of things, and I don't want to undermine their parents because I'm not living there with them. So, I share with you guys that whatever that you have, whatever God has given you in your mind, to all this thing with the weeds and stuff, we're doing good, this city's doing good, we don't need all that drama, we really don't. And I know that it's tax, and it's money, and it's this and that, but I pray for you guys, and we're not going to lay down, we're not going to bow down, we're not going to sit down, we're going to stand up by the blood of Jesus, and I'm going to pray for you guys, and I pray for our city, and like everybody here, you put the fire department on blast, you put the sheriff's department on blast, because they have a job that I don't want to do, nobody wants to do it, and everybody complains about them, but when they have a problem, who do they call? But, right now, I'd like to do that, I like to lift it up for our city, and I want to pray for our city, I want to pray for the youth of America, the youth of this city. Father God, we come to your feet right now in a prayer of thanksgiving, Father. I pray for the mayor, I pray for everyone on the city council, Father, to give them clarity, to give them boldness, to give them vision, Father, that, just like it says in Ezekiel three eighteen, that the blood is on our hands if we don't share what we know. So, we check in right now, Father, we're on our faces at, on your feet, Father, we acknowledge you with all reverence, Father, we will pause and reflect to know that you are God and you are in control, Father. We pray for the leaders of our city, Father, to give them the boldness, give them the courage, give them the gift of discernment, Father, to think before they speak, which applies to all of us, not just them, all of us. So, we pray right now for protection of our minds, our hearts, our physical bodies, Father, and we pray right now with all this situation with weed dispensaries and everything like that, Father, I pray that you close the doors, Father, that's what I pray for.
Thank you, thank you, Paul, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Frank Wright, Rafael Burguerras, and Roy Blackard.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers.
Good evening, Frank, how you doing?
I say, this old sailor's pouring cold to the fires, even the boiler's getting low, can never give up. It's my privilege to be here to say that the last two gentlemen up here have said a lot, so I'm really glad that AB eight ninety did not pass, because it would have hurt us of being able to be more productive, have more income, more jobs, being an aggressive city, a bright-fell city, and I'm seeing because the people that initiated, the governor not to vote for this, are working together as a group and in congenial manner that we become more stronger as a city, and with your help as councilmembers and so on, we've become a very strong city. We have our problems, but we work them out, just as San Francisco had problems building the Bay Bridge, but they did it, we can do the same here. So, I just say I'm real proud to be a member of this city, and for the people that've worked so hard, all you and the council, and so thank you as much, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Next speaker, please, Rafael, followed by Roy Blackard and Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, residents, and our guests.
Good evening.
I want to thank everybody for their prayers, I got a chance to talk to my sister, my father was in Florida this week, but somehow he's dying to get back to Puerto Rico, I don't understand that. You know, they don't want to leave what they were born into, and they always want to go back to their roots, so my father wants to go back to his roots. But I thank everybody for their prayers, he's safe and everything's good here for him, but he wants to go back. AB eight ninety, I want to thank the mayor, I mean, not the mayor, but also the mayor, and Victoria Baca also, I didn't want to take that away, but Jerry Brown, the governor, for listening to the people, because that's what he did. He heard the people speak, and why AB eight ninety shouldn't have been approved, and I was one of them that spoke to him and left a message, not in person, but it left a message of sincerity, because I know what it's like to be at the front line to fight for development. I know we have TVs, and we saw what happened in Houston, Florida, Puerto Rico, Mexico, and now we see what happens up north. Water, hurricanes, and now fire. Three things that could destroy someone's life, take away everything that they have worked hard for, in matters of minutes. I think that what did it for Jerry Brown, to have his own state go up in fire, and not allow developers to come in and to plant things for us. I asked him, and I told him my age, and I asked him, I know that he was a little older than I am, and I asked him to be honest with himself, have things gotten better since the day he was born, or when I was born? And I was born nineteen fifty-five, and I know he's older than I am, and I know he came to an answer to say, yes, things have gotten better. Are they perfect? No. Will they ever be perfect? No. They'll never be perfect, but we can try to make them perfect, by making sure that the people obey the rules in the law of our land. That includes anyone that comes into our city to develop. We have rules, and we have laws. And if you do not want to obey them in our city, you can go to another city. Moreno Valley wants to be safe for all of us. I want to thank the man, the resident, that's been here for thirty-seven years, the things they have seen on his corner. I thank him for his prayers. Please, pray for the city.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is Roy Blackard, followed by Chris.
So, I got a big surprise Saturday morning when I opened up the governor's updates, and I seen that he vetoed AB eight ninety. AB eight ninety was a very onerous law, and had very onerous intentions, I believe. It was too, it was set up as an attack, and I'm going to say this and ask the question, did Assemblymember Jose Medina, Penny Newman, George Hague, the Sierra Club, and that whole Enviro-sue crew, as I call them, conspire to not only harm, they are the forces that are suing the city of Moreno Valley, are they conspiring to harm the city of Moreno Valley, and on top of that, the whole state? Because if that provision was taken away, there would not be a new stadium going on in Inglewood for the Chargers and the Rams, there would not be a Walmart in Sonora where the original case was, that allowed this to go forward, and it takes away the fundamental right of the people to decide what they want done in their community. I want to thank the councilmembers that supported this on the dais, the mayor, councilmembers Baca and Cabrera that supported the right of that, councilmembers down in Riverside, Mike Subaru and Chuck Conder, which led the charge for that, assemblymembers Melissa Melendez and Travis Allen, state senators, Jeff Stone, check the record, Jeff, and Senators Morlock that were leading the charge to oppose AB eight ninety, because they could see the big picture. And if you, even though, no matter where you stood on the issue of what's going on in our particular city, one way or the other, that was a bad legislation, and none other than Jerry Brown signed it in his veto message. He made it very clear that this was bad legislation, that it needed to go back, and that was the reason why he was going to veto it. And on top of that, and he has been one for SEQA reform since he's been elected governor, because one thing he does understand is SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, has been a big hindrance to development in California, it has been a major push of the rising housing costs in California, it has lowered the quality of life overall by any reasonable analysis I can see. So, I, you know, and I'm the first one to castigate Jerry when he's wrong, but I got to give him props when he does something right. So, we need to move forward on this, we need to look at SEQA reform, we need to support the people that are for California and for Moreno Valley and the United States of America.
Thank you, Roy, and thank you for the kind words, appreciate it. Chris Malden? Hi, how you doing, Chris?
Ah, good, I just wanted to come up, and I think Roy kind of topped anything I could say, I just wanted to say I'm glad that the governor made the right decision. I was a little weary, like everybody else, about what would happen if that thing passed, but I'm glad. But hey, two other things I want to point real fast, I'll shorten and sweeten it here. I think we got a major problem with the dispensaries, I'm not against marijuana use, if it's for medical and private homes, but people doing it in streets around people who, I know people that have allergic reactions to it, that can't be around it, they go into plexic shock, actually, from marijuana, you know, and it's not a joke, it's not made up BS, it's, people actually get sick sometimes from that, there's people that are allergic to it, you know? Marijuana is not for everybody, it's not everybody's medicine, and we need to respect each other if it's going to be legalized. I wanted to say that for a while on, you know, proper stage, that's the best I could think of. And two, just something I'm dealing with personally, the mailboxes at the post office, we need to check into what's going on with the post office. I'm getting mail from somebody that hasn't had my box in three years still. Somebody should say something to the US Postal Service about reforming the job they're doing at the local post office, the main branch of Moreno Valley here on Alessandro. Been having problems and more problems, not getting my mail on time and stuff, you know, paper checks for things for my disability that aren't arriving on time, you know? Something needs to be done about that, I think. I don't know what you guys think, but I think the mail should be something you can count
Thank you, Chris, and we'll have staff reach out to you with the proper resource, the phone number and everything, how you can get in contact with the right person. Okay, thank you, Chris. All right, Madam Clerk, we have...
No more speakers.
Would any councilmembers like to make the reports or comments at this time? Please press your button. If not, we are going to move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D. On the agenda, all items listed under the consent calendar, sections A, B, C, and D, are considered to be routine and non-controversial, and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council, Moreno Valley Community Services District, city successor agency, agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board or Library of Trustees request that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. So, we have Mayor Pro Tem Baca, would you like to remove or comment?
I'd like to remove item A fourteen and place it on next week's agenda.
And that's the agenda for the special meeting?
Yes.
An A fourteen, let's just see what that is. The resolution extending ordinance nine sixteen banning all, that one?
Yeah.
Okay. To next week? Okay. I don't have any problem with that, does anybody have an issue with that?
I thought I was supposed to just move to item F, and then we could have that discussion and move it.
Well, I'm having it right now. Anyone have an issue with that?
Can we ask questions to the staff?
Sure, go ahead.
If I remember correctly, the current ban expires at the end of October, is that correct?
That is correct, councilmember.
Okay, so if we move this to next Tuesday, we would still be within the current ordinance as it is?
You still have time to adopt it, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gaiba?
Thank you. I believe the proper protocol on this would be to move it to F first, then take a separate vote, is that the normal protocol for this?
I don't think there is a normal protocol for that particular situation. If majority of the council wishes to move the item, whether it's by motion or by consensus, basically, continue it till the next meeting. Either way, we need to have a majority of the council consenting to that.
And I'm calling for the vote, so, okay. If there's consensus, it seems that there's consensus, to go ahead and move that item to A fourteen, A fourteen to next week's agenda. Okay? Any other? Okay, say again, City Attorney?
I didn't say anything, but I think Councilmember Gaiba was...
Would you put me down as a no vote, please?
We have three, at least three of you agreeing.
Yeah, it's a consensus, not a vote.
You don't have consensus.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then we have, if there's any other item, please press your request, okay? Seeing none, then we're going to go to public comments on the consent items, and again, these are only public comments on the items in the consent calendar. So, Madam Clerk, any speakers?
Yes, we have two, Rafael Burguerras and Jessica Hedlund.
And keep in mind that item A fourteen, the one about the marijuana, was moved to next Good evening, Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, guests, and residents. It's okay, I can wait till next week to make comments on that. I want to talk about A thirteen, preserving some of our history in the city of Moreno Valley. I know that we have a committee that gets funded through our tax dollars to preserve some of our history. I was going through the packet, and I was reading about the Little Red Firehouse and things like that, things that we have here. I mean, I came here in ninety-three, and that's when the city actually was born, you know, became a city? No, ten years, actually, came in. And, but I don't know the entire history, like Sonoma and Edgemont, and I know there's a lot of history, especially when I go to the old two fifteen, when I ride up and down that street, I see the history there, like Route sixty-six, things like that. I like what the committee is doing to try to preserve our history. I think every city should do that for themselves. Preserve your history, know where you came from, so you can know where you're going to and how to correct things on the way there. It's very important that we do that for our city and for the residents, not to forget that Sonoma was here first, and Edgemont, then we got incorporated, and we all together are now Moreno Valley. So, I want them to know that it took work, and it took commitment to be where we're at today. This is why we have a mayor and four councilmembers, an elected mayor this time, for sure, and that's a good thing, and that's the way we want to keep it from now on, where we, the people, have the right to elect our officials, not appointed with the conflict of interest for other people. Because that's one thing I've learned in this city, that some people don't want to let go of the old and go into the new, and I understand how they feel, but things are changing, and we need to change with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is Jessica Hedlund.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, council. I do recognize that you've decided to move the discussion for the marijuana legislation to next week's agenda, however, obviously, my time is a bit precious, so I would hope that you would allow me to speak regardless on the issue.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. The last that I came to one of these meetings, I was speaking in regards to the crime in the Hidden Springs area, and then I heard about the marijuana legislation. As a Hidden Springs resident, and as a teacher at Vista Heights Middle School, and as a new mother, the marijuana legislation is disconcerting to me. The reason being, frankly, my students who are in the eighth grade, who are thirteen-year-olds, seem to think that marijuana is a multivitamin, and that they should be taking it every day for daily use, and that it is good for them. My age group specifically is most similar neurologically to toddlers, meaning they're the most apt to be damaged neurologically, specifically their prefrontal cortex, which is affected negatively by marijuana. Regarding my opinion on legal marijuana use for adults, that's, you know, neither here or there, but I would like to know, as my city council, if you are going to pass this legislation, how exactly do you intend to better educate the children in this city regarding safe marijuana use, if you are going to pass the legislation? And furthermore, how are you going to support the law enforcement that is going to have to respond to the open dispensaries and to the inevitable DUIs? How are you guys planning to support them further? Because I did watch last week's meeting, and it did concern me a little bit that they were not given, in my opinion, humbly, enough time to really voice their opinion regarding the issue, the police chief and the fire department specifically, whereas the private business owners who are speaking on behalf of marijuana legislation were given apt amount of time, and were asked to come back up to the mic multiple times to further their opinion. So, I would just like to know how you guys intend to support not only law enforcement, but the children in this city, and to ensure their safety regarding this marijuana legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
No more speakers.
Entertained a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding item A fourteen, which will be moved to next week's agenda.
So, moved?
It moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baca, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Yeah, this is incorrect. Yeah, this is incorrect, Pat, just so you know. It should be Baca and Cabrera. Go ahead and just vote.
I'll change it.
She'll change it later.
I'll change it.
Okay, and it's approved five oh. We're going to go to item E one, which is the public hearing for two national pollutant discharge elimination system mail ballot proceedings. We'll have report of public works. And then if there's a lot of ballots to be counted, we may go on to another item and then come back until that item is counted. So we'll have report of public works, Candace?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, Candace Castle, Special District's Division Manager. This item is a public hearing to add two parcels into the city's MPDS funding program. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System is a federally mandated program to control pollution of stormwater runoff. Moreno Valley Gateway has been approved to construct a seventy-seven space parking lot on Resource Way. And Brodea Industrial Center has been approved to construct a distribution warehouse at the southwest corner of Brodea and Heacock. The city has approved both projects, provided each pays the increased costs the city will incurred for the MPDS program. Both property owners have requested that the city collect the funding by applying a parcel charge onto their annual property tax bill. Before the city can do so, however, each property owner must first approve the MPDS rate through a mail ballot proceeding. After the city conducts a public hearing, the city clerk can open and count the ballots. Each property owner's ballot will be counted individually to determine whether or not they have approved inclusion of their respective properties into the program. If the property owner approves the ballot, the parcel charge will be applied to the property tax bill of only those parcels identified on the ballot and will not impact any other property in the city. Staff respectfully requests the city council conduct the public hearing and upon its close, direct the city clerk to open the two ballots and announce the results for each. Concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Candace. Any council questions, please press your requests. Have you seen none? Madam Clerk, any public comments?
None.
I'll go ahead and close the discussion on that and I'll entertain a motion by council to direct the city clerk, which is item, actually recommendation number two.
Honorable Mayor, yeah, and was the public hearing formally opened and closed?
Oh, you know what, yeah, let me see. Yeah, the public hearing was opened and then we didn't have any public comments, right? Okay, so then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you, mayor.
Motion by councilmember Geiba and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Baca to go ahead and start the counting.
For Moreno Valley Gateway?
Okay, you're not going to put it on here or you're just going to voice vote?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. For Moreno Valley Gateway, one ballot received, yes. For Brodea Industrial Center, one ballot received, yes.
Okay, was that it? Okay. All right, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, number three, four, and five. Moved by councilmember Geiba, second by councilmember Marquez. All in favor, actually, it's up here, so go ahead and vote. Okay, it's approved five zero. We're going to go to item G, which is proposed legislative advocacy platform twenty eighteen, report a city manager.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. On this evening's agenda is your proposed two thousand eighteen legislative advocacy platform. As you know, we update this fairly regularly to guide our legislative actions on your behalf. We are recommending approval of the platform. It outlines the city's position on priority issues. It is cast broadly so that we as an organization can move swiftly and effectively to advocate your positions as legislations pending at the state and federal levels. The platform is designed to address regional, state, and federal issues and again allow us to move forward swiftly and efficiently. The platform is grouped into key categories. Those categories are community and economic development, environment and public health, fiscal responsibility, livability, local control, public safety, public utilities, and then the final category is transportation, infrastructure, and mobility. The platform also reflects your council's objectives as built into your Momentum Movail strategic plan. This year's platform is nearly identical to the previous one. The few updates that were done were primarily suggestions by your staff, your subject matter experts in some of these areas. And so with that, we put this before you for your consideration and respectfully recommend approval.
Thank you so much, Tom. Right before we get to council questions, just as far as council questions, we will do only one round, a couple of minutes each council member. Please ask your questions and then we're moving on to public comments because I do want to hear from the public about their input. So we do have Mayor Pro Tem Baca. Go ahead, council questions, please.
I don't have any questions per se. I just want to say thank you for, Tom, for your presentation. And it was because of this leadership, because of the platform, that as a city, we were able to advocate and oppose AB eight ninety. And I can't tell you how pleased I am with the overall effort put forth by the city in its advocacy at Sacramento and at local level, reaching out to other cities, other city councils, board of supervisors, and certainly our elected officials up in Sacramento to voice strong and diligently and forcefully to oppose AB eight ninety. It passed, unfortunately, the Senate and the Assembly, but not by a large margin. You know, it lost steam as it went. It started out stealth. It's, you know, it had a lot of steam. It was a freight train, it had three legs and it was running. But in the end, our governor in his infinite wisdom was able to say, you know what? This is a vendetta against Moreno Valley, but the consequences are going to be paid by the whole state of California. And he vetoed it at the eleventh hour, literally. So I just want to say thank you to the staff, to the city council for having this platform. Thank you.
Okay, any public comments from the public?
None.
Oh, not on this one. I thought there were a few people that wanted to speak on that one. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion by council to approve.
So moved?
Okay, moved by... Oh, deliberation, okay. Go ahead and press your button, please. Okay, now it's there. Go ahead.
I'm in the deliberation phase, so this is not a question and answer situation.
And it's two minutes, okay, Pat?
Usually, people even get three minutes. I'm a council member and I should have the same appropriate response. In your purpose, you mentioned that under city council direction, kind of in conflict with the legislative platform comments itself. I'm going to share with you that I sit on the legislative committees for both League of California Cities and SCAG. All of these organizations, including many cities themselves, have what they call a legislative committee that comes together, reviews many of these items, and then gives recommendation to the voting body. This is the proper way to do this. It's good to have a legislative platform as a guidance document, but the document as it reads here is if the proposed legislation falls within the guidelines of the legislative platform, city staff prepares a letter for the mayor's signature to express the city's position. It should be mentioned that the council, as is said in the beginning, should be making some of those decisions so that on any particular case, either we should have a legislative committee, which I would highly recommend, we should have a legislative committee that works in conjunction with the residents, the businesses, so they have their input. In this particular case, and from one previously mentioned, there was no information passed on to at least two council members on this bill, AB eight ninety. Therefore, we were not allowed to weigh in on our concerns, nor was the rest of the community allowed to do that. So if this platform goes forward with these items as they are written and we don't make an adjustment where we're allowed to have full input from all council members and at least knowledge of what's going on, then I can't support this because it's not appropriate to our community, our residents, our businesses, and our concerns for our entire city. I've sat on many legislative platforms committees and it's never done this way. It's always respectful of the input from all the voting bodies. So there's my position.
Thank you, council member. And I do want to say, out of respect, I believe there was a speaker that submitted a slip. So we will get to you. We just found out right now, okay? Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes, I would like to say a couple of, I think it's been over a month now. We have an employee, Kimberly Sutherland, who I think she's actually responsible for taking care of this. And I recall she came to my office, we scheduled a meeting and everything, and we went over the legislative platform and she specifically asked me, please read over it thoroughly if you have any recommendations, if there's something that you want to add to the platform, please let me know so we can put that into the platform. So I read through it, I didn't have any additions, but I do want to ask staff, was that given, was that option given to the entire council to add something on to the platform?
Yes, councilmember Cabrera, that was. Kimberly verified for me that she contacted each individual member of the council and invited individual participation in exactly that type of meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to the public speaker. Carrie, if you could please approach. We're only doing one round, sorry.
It was given to her personally by me.
Okay.
Because it wasn't planned, I don't know why.
Thank you. Okay, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Carrie?
Yes, I'd like to speak on this item with respect to the staff report stating that there's no physical impact of the legislative agenda. I would just like to point out that the impact on the citizenry of the legislative agenda has been traumatic. The support of the city for SB one, the rise in gasoline tax for our commuter city has been very important since that gas tax has risen already and will rise again. In addition to that, our vehicles will be, the vehicle fees will also increase. I also think it's important to point out that this agenda item probably should be delayed because the concept of no physical impact may be related just to the city's agenda. But to the citizenry, the legislative agenda of the city is critical. And I think the citizenship needs to be informed that when the city determines that they will support or oppose something that the legislator, legislation, or the state or assembly support, then that increase to the citizens should be detailed in the legislative agenda with respect to how much it will increase citizens and their fees. I realize these fees are not imposed by the city of Moreno Valley, but these fees imposed by the state are significant to all of our citizens. So I believe just the concept of no physical impact by this legislative agenda is wrong. It's inaccurate and I think that is a reason to delay this item and to actually go back to staff and ask the question, what is the impact to the citizens of the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, I'll go ahead and before I close the discussion, if there's no one else that wants to speak, because we did only one round here, I just want to say that what this basically allows, and we did have the opportunity to provide our input, Kimberly Sutherland, our public informations officer, went around to each of the council members asking, you know, is there any input that you would like, any changes? And what this basically allows is for myself, the mayor, and also the city manager to, if there's an issue or some kind of bill or anything at the state level that we can act immediately and quickly, whether to support it or to oppose it. And that's very, very important that we do that because if not, if we have to wait until another council meeting to get that approved and those kinds of things, then it can be a very bad situation for our city. All right, so I'll entertain a motion by council to approve the recommendation.
So moved?
It moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baca. Second by councilmember Cabrera. Please vote. Okay, it's approved three, yes, one no, and one abstention. We're going to go to item G two, which is the resolution amending council meeting rules of procedure, conflict of interest, section five point five, point five, report a city attorney. Go ahead, city attorney Martin?
Thank you.
Yes.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. This item is before you on a request to consider an amendment to the conflict of interest rules and procedures by removing a couple of sections that were installed by the prior council. On November twenty-ninth, at the last meeting of the outgoing council, this item was passed and the two sections were added to the conflict of interest procedures. One being the disclosure of campaign contributions, which required a council member to disclose any direct contributions of five hundred dollars or more prior to deliberating on an item that would have a material effect on the contributor if that item was before the council. And to also disclose five hundred dollars or more of indirect campaign contributions. And there is a definition of indirect contributions that is put in there. The second resolution that was adopted amended the conflict of interest and disclosure procedures to add a requirement that a council member who's employed by a governmental agency discloses that employment prior to deliberating on an item that would have a material effect on that governmental agency. Stated during the council meeting in November, I will repeat it today, these rules are, first of all, superfluous of some of the state law. FUP section four sixty already requires campaign contribution disclosure. It's a public document which is available on the internet and in the city clerk's office. Secondly, there is a specific exemption for city council members from recusing themselves in the event of campaign contributions, unlike, for example, planning commissioners, which need to disclose and recuse if an item comes before them from a contributor. The second item which requires disclosure of governmental employment, again, by state law, income derived from governmental employment or reimbursement is specifically excluded from the definition of income under the Political Reform Act. And therefore, it is not a recusal situation. In other words, if one of you is employed by a governmental agency and gets a paycheck from them, you do not need to recuse yourself from deliberating over an item that would affect that agency. And it is specifically excluded under state law. Next, the item, these policies would require a council member to be able to recall four years of contributions, direct or indirect, meaning from any employee, agent, associate, and basically puts a reporting council member in a position where unless they have to do a lot of research way ahead of time, they're not in a position to know whether or not there have been five hundred dollars of indirect contributions over the last four years, for example. The rules are not enforceable and that is one of the main reasons why I brought this item before you because there's no consequence for non-compliance. Unlike some of the rules that deal with council's behavior on the dais or some other of the affirmative actions, which can be controlled either by the chair or by the process, this rule basically sits silent. If nobody reports it... If nobody reports, if nobody says anything, there's no way for any of you or any of the staff to know whether or not a violation is occurring, and even if violation was occurring, there's no consequences for that violation. So with that, I'll submit it to any questions. It's up for you to deliberate and take action on. Approval of the resolution would delete those two sections and return the conflict of interest code to the status it was in before November of last year. If you decide that you would like to continue to have these resolutions on the book, then do not approve the resolution that's before you. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney, for that comprehensive report, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, this item. I do have one council member that pressed their button to ask questions. We have Mayor Pro Tembaca, and we're only doing one round, two minutes each. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney, the council currently has, or I should say, the city currently posts each council member's and candidate's Form four sixty on the city's website. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I've been filling out four sixties for, I would say, at least ten years, and I know that any contribution, whether it's monetary or not, over ninety-nine dollars must be reported. And I also know that these are available to the public at any time, so I think that that's the best way for the community and anybody that wants to know, to see where the campaign contributions are coming from, because even if someone gives you fifty dollars cash, and then they give you another fifty, that has to be reported because it's now a hundred dollars, so it goes over the ninety-nine dollar threshold.
That is correct.
And as far as reporting, if you work for a governmental entity, for example, we have the mayor, he works for the school district, and there's, I think you said that there's an exemption to him reporting that he works for a school district, however, isn't that also part of the Form seven hundred?
The Political Reform Act excludes specifically income or reimbursement from reporting it as income, and therefore, from recusal obligation. In other words, if an entity is before you and you are employed by that entity, let's say it's Aldi, you would need to disclose that fact and recuse yourself, because this constitutes a source of income to you, and the decision that you would be making would be, in theory, affected by that. Employment by governmental agencies is by law specifically excluded from that, and it does not need to be reported under the conflict of interest laws.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Okay, we'll move to public comments. Madam Clerk, you said we have two?
No, we have six. Kaira Pacheco, Carrie Thing, Ladonna Jemson.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and do two minutes each. Okay? Thank you. And that's because we have six speakers.
Good evening, mayor, staff, city council. My name is Kaira Pacheco, and I'm the vice president of the Valleyview High School Progressives Club. Tonight, I'll voice the concerns that the members of my club have in regards to the proposed repeal of several government transparency laws. The current policy states that any council member that receives direct campaign contributions of five hundred dollars or more from a party that has a matter pending before the city council must disclose such contributions before deliberating on the item. This is a common sense policy that promotes confidence in government, undercuts corruption, and upholds fair ethical practices. There is absolutely no reason why government should be less transparent towards its citizens. The current policy also states that we ought to require any council member to disclose their employment with a governmental agency when any pending council action could have a material effect on such governmental agency. In other words, if a council member is voting on something that could benefit them, they should at least tell us. There is no conceivable justification for creating a law allowing public servants to hide their conflicts of interest. This is not an issue of ideology or party, progressive or conservative, Republican or Democrat. We can all rally and take pride in a transparent ethical government. Attempts to devise a government of secrets is at best shameful and at worst tyrannical. Our aim is to not attack anyone on this council, but to create an understanding that even young people in this city care about our government. We care that our representatives are honest and not deceitful. We demand that our government is by the people and for the people, not by the corrupt and for the special interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Carrie, then, followed by Ladonna?
And Rafael.
And then Rafael.
Good evening, again. I support the current city resolution that requires disclosure by council of campaign contributions of five hundred dollars or more from a party with matters pending before the city. And my rationale is, when influence and affluence set the tone for council decisions, then all of us suffer from fictitious job creation, environmental damage, harm to the prestige of our city, and an opportunity lost to a developer with no real plans. To what end and to what purpose does twenty-three hundred acres of our city's best land set fallow for the past two years since the decision was made by this body to support an optimization industry that is reducing jobs and increasing use of automation and robots? This action was taken when over two thousand homes were forecasted to be built on that land and replaced with a supposed shovel-ready project. But when influence and affluence are silenced, then comprehensive legislative work begins to solve the large problems and mitigates the small petty concerns of political money. Rarely do I agree with our current president, but even he reevaluated support of an official compromised by big pharmaceutical money to lead the war on drugs. I ask that you, as city council, for all Moreno Valley citizens, lead the war on influence and return to regular order. Where the minority has a voice to present agenda items, retain the twelve-day notice for council agenda so that citizens might have a true opportunity to read proposed city action, limit special sessions to a true exception rather than to broaden the mayor's rule, and most importantly, support a city ordinance to govern political action by adopting Fair Political Practice Commission rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Rafael, followed by Bob and Luis Palomares?
Ladonna's first.
Oh, sorry, Ladonna, actually. Sorry, Rafael. Ladonna first.
Oh, okay. All right. Good evening.
Good evening, council, staff, residents. Good to see everyone. I am Ladonna Jemson, and I was one of the co-authors of the conflict of interest resolution that is before you. I represent not only myself, but several residents in the city of Moreno Valley back in two thousand sixteen who asked for something to be put in place to hold our city elected officials accountable. In the staff report, it states that one of the reasons to remove this is because of the information on the four sixties are readily accessible and available online. The common person does not know anything about the four sixties, what they're for, how to read them, or where to find them. There are elected officials behind the dais right now who had struggles completing their own four sixties and making mistakes, so we know that the four sixties are not that easy. We also know that the names that show up on four sixties, for instance, as a PAC, may not reflect the names of the companies or the developers connected to a project. So the information is still being hidden from the public. The intent of this resolution was to provide the residents with a sense of inclusion when the council is actively addressing an issue. Transparency is continuously being emphasized by the city staff through the direction of council. Don't you think that the example needs to come first from you, our elected officials? Your personal ethics are being placed under a bright light when there is a resolution like this, holding all of you and future councils accountable, both to the public who elected you and everyone else?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Followed by Bob Palomares and Luis Palomares.
Good evening, mayor, staff, council members, guests. I've been in the last two, three campaigns, and I've learned that when you want to know what another candidate's doing, you go to the four sixty, and it tells you who's been giving them money for a purpose. When I give my money to a candidate, it's for a purpose, and the purpose is to bring forth their message to the city and to the district. That's why I give money, and that's why developers and other people, realtors, business people, even other candidates give to candidates, so the message can go forward, because in this city, we have an opposition that likes to tell lies. So the more money that the candidate got, that I give to, to bring the message out to the public in all languages, so they understand what's at stake, okay? Because that's the key thing here. The money that people give is to bring forth a message. If the people don't like the message, don't vote for the candidate. But we know that we have an opposition here that would tell lies, make up stories, because I have evidence of that at home, and they have lost consistently, over and over and over, in what they do to this city. This is why I give, what I give to a candidate, and developers and everyone else, is to bring forth a message, not to influence the candidate. They have the right to vote yes and no, but not to influence them, but to bring out the message.
Thank you, Rafael.
Does anyone here remember that we had a corruption investigation? So this is smoldering smoke that these people are talking about, because this city was drugged through the mud, through the media, council members, you know, they were put on the cross falsely, and the council members that came after them, the ones that were recalled, and the reason I say hypocrisy is because they were talking transparency, and one of the council members at that time, she was voted out because she was talking that, oh, you know, until it was going to be revealed that she had pulled a bank job. So there it is, you know, and after all the corruption investigation, FBI, IRS, and who else? All the money that was spent, all the hours, staff had to go through to produce records, documents. Highland Fairview was drugged through it, everybody was, even the citizens, because we live here. People would say, oh, you live in Moreno Valley? What's going on over there? So everybody came out clean because it was all false. As former mayor, Tom Owens would say, it was just a handful of whackadoodles that were doing it, and that's who it was, and they're still here. Some of them are still, you know, it's smoldering. Got to dig it up and turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We have Luis Palomares, our last speaker.
Wow. It's pretty amazing. Ladonna's here talking about transparency. When she was knocking on doors, you know, during the recall season, lying about Mrs. Baca, you know, lying about her, I mean, transparency, that's how she got through that seat, through the back door, by lies. And then when she's on there, she's lying again. She didn't tell anybody all the things she had done, bank jobs, she was on, you know, on the run for nine years. She didn't tell anybody about that, you know? It's so much hypocrisy, and she was right there leading the charge when all this happened with our, with our, all the recalls and everything else, with the DA, the FBI, the IRS, all that money. They didn't care about that transparency. I mean, she would have put our city through, they drug it through the mud, the swamp. Golly, the poor staff went through, howling back through all that, too, and everybody else in this city, and she's here talking about something that she put on the books afterwards? Because nobody agrees with her agenda, and nobody wants her, and nobody wants to put a dollar to her campaign because she can't raise a dollar? Well, wow, look what you want. You are probably all up with that AB eight ninety. I'm sure you were on that bandwagon, because you never want anything to come here, you know, burn it all down. Well, you know, that's the developer's land, whatever he wants to do with it, leave him alone, let him do it. I said, let's just build a prison there, then maybe they'll be happy with that. I don't care what anybody did in this, what anybody does in the city, they'll complain about it all. I'm telling you, even if God came down here and built something, they'd be on the, you know, it's all about the money, the money, the penny Newman's, you know, give us a dollar and we'll go away. Give us a dollar and we'll go away. That's how sad and sick it is. We want to get into the twenty-first century. They want to keep us back in the nineteenth century, just like our president, our fake president, Trump, he wants to keep us in the nineteenth century in the coal mines still. And I want to thank Governor Brown.
Over. Thank you. I want to thank them, I call them, thank them. We go to council deliberation, and we'll do one round, two minutes each, so please press your speaker requests if you have any comments. Okay, we have Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Well, I want to commend our city attorney for wanting to clean up the books and get rid of anything that we really can't use, and he put it well. I don't want to reiterate everything he had to say about these two ordinances, but I do remember that when they, the old council, and I think Mr. Geibert was there, too, and the mayor, when they were talking about the crossing guards, they were trying to eliminate the mayor's vote because he works for Moreno Valley Unified. So that was kind of like treacherous, and as far as the reporting the campaign contributions, whether they're monetary or non-monetary, again, the four sixties are online, our Form seven hundreds are online, and you can see where we work and where the campaign contributions are coming from, and it's illegal to vote when there's a conflict of interest. That's set in stone. You can't go around it. I know that Kaira Pacheco from the high school, I commend you for being here, but we do have laws that are even stricter than these. Here, they're asking for you to report anything over five hundred on the four sixties, it's anything over ninety-nine dollars. Thank you.
Wait, you got to hit it. Okay. Councilmember Geibert?
Thank you. Just to make the facts known to the public, under two separate cases, working with this Moreno Valley Unified School District, this mayor was approached by the Moreno Valley School District employee and administrators and pressured to vote the way they wanted to do that. This was put into place to protect those situations. I think that needs to be aired. This was never meant as an attack. But I worked for school district, and school districts can put tremendous pressure on you, even though they cannot fire you, and this was the case, because I was very concerned for Mr. Gutierrez at the time, so this was part of the reasoning behind that. It was not the reason to stop him from his vote, but the vote happened the way it did because of the pressure that was exerted. This is, as the attorney said, there's no consequences. Well, if you never get caught for doing anything, there's never any consequences. So if somebody was to be avoiding the stop sign for a whole year and nobody ever bothered to get caught by it, it's not wise to remove the stop sign. Are there consequences for this? No, but there is a consequence of the heart. The intent for this project that was put together for over a year with the previous council was to give the council a chance to show the public what their intentions was to give other, give the council a chance to show the public what their intentions are. And if there's, even though it's not legal, it can't be held accountable, you were agreeing to work together with the city in a transparent manner. And that's what we are trying to do after the recalls and all the other problems. Is that this city wanted to be transparent. The council then, last council, wanted to have transparency. We cared about the public. The public asked for other ways. This was put forth to do so. The vote was 4-0 in favor. The then mayor was not there, so he didn't vote. So that's simply how it was. Thank you for the comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Geiba. Councilmember Carrera?
Yes, I would just like to say, first of all, you know, I'm fairly new to the council still. I've only been here since June. As a candidate and now as a council member, I know how difficult it can be sometimes to fill out those FPPC forms. It's not easy, and there's a lot of information that goes on those forms. So personally, on this matter, after hearing the comments and explanation from city attorney, specifically talking about the exemptions when you work for a government entity. If it doesn't state anything like that in state law, so I don't think we should have that here at this level. And in addition, I will go so far as to say that, moving forward, any items that come onto the agenda, and I keep track of my FPPC forms. I've done it since I came onto the council. Any items that have come up to the council for a vote, I check and make sure that I haven't received contributions. Because if I have, it's my obligation to do so morally and ethically. I'm going to do so. And I wasn't here at the time when this came into effect or the council was here. I don't know what was going on there. But speaking for myself, moving forward, and I hope the rest of the council will do so as well. Anytime an item comes onto the agenda, if we have taken contributions from that entity, whoever it is, that we disclose that to the public. I know I'm going to do so, and I'm telling you here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carrera. Just want to mention, I think Luis Palomares, I want to thank Luis. Luis, you did a great job tonight at the podium. I think you said it correctly as far as what exactly happened and why this is actually happening. If you look back in 2016 during the election for mayor and also the other council seats, during that time, there was a proposal to actually limit contributions. That was the first proposal that was asked of the city attorney, then city attorney, Steve Quintanilla. He actually drafted a staff report. But then the council members were told, you know, that that's something that we can't do. And so from there, this new report or new resolution was developed as well. At that time, I believe we had the new city attorney, right, city attorney? You were there at the November 29th meeting?
That is correct.
And at that meeting, the city attorney mentioned to the outgoing council that this is contrary to state law. You know, and so, and it is. It's contrary to state law. Why are we contradicting state law? So it's not about transparency, because I think the council members up here are transparent, fill out their 460s correctly, you know, at least for the most part, you know, I do. And I'm always transparent. I tell people everything, you know, as far as, you know, what the contributions are. So it's not about transparency. And what's very interesting is that the individual council member that was talking about transparency has issues with transparency, because, you know, in the previous legal issues as well. So keep that in mind as well. I also want to say that, again, it was just a resolution for political gain at the time. I think the council members and the outgoing council members that wanted that item was, you know, they wanted a Press Enterprise article saying that they're doing campaign reform, when in reality, they weren't, because there's nothing that, there's no teeth to it. And you're going against state law. Want to mention also, again, I mentioned that. And then finally, I just want to commend the city attorney for bringing this matter to our attention and also for his recommendation. I applaud his expertise in this area. And I want to thank you, city attorney. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I really appreciate that. So I will go ahead and close this. I entertain a motion by council to repeal these two resolutions.
And adopt the resolution?
Adopt what resolution?
Okay, so moved.
But by adopting the resolution, that is before you would be in effect repealing those two sections.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mayor Pro Tembaka and a second by Carrera. Please vote. It is three ayes, one no, and one abstention. We're going to move to reports, which is March Joint Powers Authority. I'll go ahead and start with that one. Tonight, I'm providing an update from the recent March Joint Powers Commission meetings held on October 11th. In that meeting, the commission, it's a very short report here, adopted a debt issuance management policy. They approved changes to a form related to the Meridian project to eliminate an inconsistency between expiration dates on two different documents. And then finally, they approved a mixed-use project of five buildings with a combined size of 176,000 square feet at the northeast corner of Amberian and Meridian. That concludes my report on last week's March Joint Powers Commission. And the next one is Riverside County Transportation Commission, Mayor Pro Tembaka.
Thank you, Mayor. At the October 10th meeting, the board approved an overall procurement strategy to accelerate the Riverside County Transportation Efficiency Corridor, which includes a project to construct new toll express lane corridors from the 91 Express Lanes to north of Interstate 15. Funding for this project, as required by SB 132, must be spent by June 23. To meet this aggressive schedule, the project will be delivered through a series of contract amendments to existing contracts and engineering companies, contractors, toll vendors, legal and financial advisors.
Okay, we have a report from Councilmember Marquez on the Riverside Transit Agency.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Riverside Transit Agency in the past will be offering free bus rides on New Year's Eve to support those that have to work that evening and to provide an alternate mode of transportation for those that had too much to drink. The free service will begin on December 31st from 2:00 p.m. until the end of the business schedule or bus schedule for each particular route. That concludes my report.
And we have Mayor Pro Tembaka from the School District/City Joint Task Force.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we met today, this afternoon, and I want to thank all the staff that was there and for providing the information needed for the inner agencies that were there. Lake Paris shared that up to 3,000 people may attend the One Love Music and Art Festival this weekend. Other upcoming activities include Lake Paris Annual Lights on the Lake Event scheduled for December 9th and the annual First Day Hike scheduled for January 1st. Moreno Valley College shared that the Third Annual Veterans Scholarship Breakfast is scheduled for November 3rd. And the Moreno Valley College Gospel Singers 25th Anniversary Celebration will be on November 18th. Also, late class sessions and accelerated eight-weeks program begins on October 21st. Moreno Valley Unified School District shared that anti-bullying parent workshops have been scheduled at every elementary school. The district is partnering with Think Together for the second year of the middle school sports program, which provides basketball and soccer for boys and girls ages six... Maybe the sixth grade, because it says middle schools. Yeah, sixth grade.
It is sixth grade.
Okay. The district is also seeking volunteers for its Citizens Oversight Committee. And I believe that there's about six vacancies, so, and they meet only four times a year. So if you're interested and would like to volunteer, please call the school district and volunteer. Thank you.
Okay, and then our last report is our, by Councilmember Geiba, Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG.
Thank you. Well, SCAG, as usual, I'm on both the Transportation Committee and your Regional Council, both of them. Not much really took place, but I'll just give you a couple of highlights from our meeting. On the Transportation Committee, and this will be important for Mike, I think I sent you the information already. I photographed it for you. We passed Resolution 17593 regarding Augmented 217 Regional Action Transportation Program and the funding and the schedule for that, so that our city can be one step ahead and move forward on it. I also submitted to Hassan Akrotz, the executive director, a copy of our Highway 60 Fast Lane Grant. And he got right on that, as well as my conversation with Senator Roth and his pledge to assist the city of Moreno Valley in fixing that 60 freeway. So I think that was very good that I could get those conversations out with him. Also, there was an informational item that you might be interested in. Riverside Transportation Agency First and Last Mile Mobility Plan. An update, they actually came out there and spoke to us about Riverside's update. And the Transportation Safety Regional Existing Corridors, those are great updates. Regional Council itself basically mirrors much of what the Executive Council does. We had one presentation item on open data, big data. I will be back there on that final meeting in November. And again, approved the Active Transportation Program Regional from the Regional Council. Regional Council represents the 69 districts and the other regions that are involved with it. Also, we had a nice surprise, which I think you'll all appreciate from SCAG. While we were at our Regional Council, we were all asked to just remain around. Not just us, but all the representatives from the cities. And SCAG has 191 cities and six counties it represents. So all of the electeds that were there and everything were asked to hang around, because we had a special guest. That special guest was Governor Brown. It was kind of nice to hear him speak and talk, and he was there mainly to push his water project. And one of our members, I thought was quite interesting, had mentioned to them, to ask him, when he asked for questions, asked him, are you going to champion secret reform? He wouldn't answer the question, and he went on to talk about his water project. You take that any way you want, but obviously, that's not on his agenda at the current state of affairs. So that's pretty much it. Very interesting meeting. I've got some nice pictures, if you guys would like to post them. He ripped the mic out of Hassan's hands and said, mine. But if anybody's ever talked with Governor Brown and had a visit with him, you'd understand his personality. You never know what he's going to do.
All right. We're going to move on to City Manager's Report. Thank you, Councilmember Geiba.
No report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
None here either. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And everything's been going okay with the strategic plan? Pretty good?
It is. We'll be due for an update to the council probably next month.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And then we have a... Could you make an announcement? Actually, the new human resources person, maybe if you want to mention a few words about her?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to welcome to the city, our organization, as well as the community, Kathleen Sanchez as our new Human Resources Director.
You could please stand, Kathleen.
We feel very fortunate to have attracted a Human Resources Director with the caliber of expertise as Kathleen. We are stealing her from, we stole her from the Pasadena Unified School District. She also has vast experience with Riverside Unified School District and then worked at Fort Knox with the Department of Defense in their Human Resources Department. She, as I said, she has vast experience, a lot of expertise, and a real heart for employees as well, which I know that she's going to fit in very well with the executive team and the whole Team Movail. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thanks so much, Michelle. Okay, so we'll go to closing comments if we have any. Councilmember Geiba?
Thank you. Well, been busy. I've still got more busy to go. So I thought I'd share a few of the things that I've done on behalf of the city. I participated in the International Walk to School event at Hidden Springs Elementary with the parent staff and, of course, our children. We walked from intersection halfway up the street for about a mile, half a mile down to this elementary school and supported the kids on that. Very good idea. And where I live in that area, there's a nice cul-de-sac where the parents could literally drop their children off, and they could walk that same walk from that distance. So that was fun. There's some pictures. I think the school site might have some pictures of us doing that walk together. The Piology Soft Opening, both David Marquez and I attended that. It was a nice soft opening. I know they had a hard opening later that one I couldn't get to. Ongoing monthly RCA membership, never missed a meeting as of yet, still staying on top of it. I attended the Cal Baptist College of Health Science Ribbon Cutting. Cal Baptist is my alumni for a couple of degrees. And the, so I was there for them, and that's where I was talking with Senator Roth about his support for our Highway 60. And I also encouraged the president of the Cal Baptist to perhaps consider making, building an actual satellite college here in Moreno Valley. His eyebrows, you know, his eyebrows lit up, but I don't know what that meant, so I'll continue to pursue that. Let me see. We had a very educational Java with Jeff, if you had an opportunity to visit with me at the Paris House of Crepes last Saturday. Lots of good information. We had three members of our staff that were gracious enough to be there and answer questions. Questions I myself probably could not have answered as correctly and accurately as them. That's why I like them to be there. They're educational. I went, I attended the RCO Education Summit, Riverside County Office of Education's there, and a couple of summits, including taking time to visit with Moreno Valley's discussion on their, on their program. Celebrated the Movail 25th year. I know a lot of our staff was there, and we enjoyed that. So was David Marquez. I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, but we both got a plaque. Sworn the Friends of the Senior Center Board and Officers, and that was an honor. Attended the BIA Installation Awards Banquet. Continued my service to community at the Trinity Baptist Church 5K for Breast Cancer Awareness this past Saturday, and I walked with them for a while. The Inland Empire Navy Ball, I'm a retired Navy vet, and we celebrated our 242nd birthday. And I also went to the Change of Command for the 163rd Combat Squadron Drone Team. And so there's a lot more to go for the month. This was just the first part of the month. So I'm there for you, Moreno Valley. I'm there to support you, and I'm there to represent you in everything I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carrera?
Yes. First of all, I wanted to thank the young lady, Ms. Pacheco, who's not here anymore. I believe she says she's from Valley View, just because she's very well spoken and it looks like she's already involved in some kind of political club at her, at her school. Secondly, I did want to let everyone know that over the next month and a half or so before Thanksgiving, I'll be visiting the four high schools in Moreno Valley Unified School District during lunchtime. And I do want to thank Sergio Camacho, who's on the Emerging Leaders Council. He's back there in the teal shirt. Thank you, Sergio, for joining me on some of these visits to the high schools. We really just want to reach out to the youth and let them know that we're here. You know, we're young and we're making things happen for the city. And we just want to extend our hand out to them and see if they need anything, hear their concerns, and just open that conversation, have that dialogue with them, and ask the right questions so we can get their minds moving a little bit. So next Tuesday, I will be, no, is it next Tuesday? Yeah, Tuesday, October 24th, I'll be at Valley View from 11:00 to 1:00. And then in November, on Tuesdays, I'll be at the other three high schools. Additionally, the, the construction on Heacock between Genshin and Iris is now finished. So thank you to Public Works and the rest of the staff for making that happen. I was looking forward to that being finished. Now I can drive through there, and it's just, man, there's nothing like a new resurfaced road. So you, you know, if you've been avoiding that, I recommend to drive, drive through there now and check it out. And last of all, I just want to remind everyone about upcoming events here in the city. It's actually the first ever. Next Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is the Latin Film Festival. I just want to remind everyone, you know, bring out your children, bring your entire families to the Moreno Valley Mall. At Harkins Theater, they'll be showing independent films from all over the world. Tickets start at $8, and they'll be giving discounts for seniors and students. And they'll be showing films on three days, so Friday, the 27th, Saturday, 28th, and Sunday, 29th, from 12:00 noon to around 11:00 p.m. around 11:00 PM. So they'll be showing films all throughout the day. And at the same time that the film festival is happening, right outside of Harkins Theater, we're going to have the Art Walk. So this is actually the first time that I've heard that we have something of this size here in Moreno Valley as well. We're going to have a lot of local artists. They're actually all from Moreno Valley, if I remember correctly. One of them is Tony Lovell, who's an amazing, amazing painter. He has this, this set of three paintings. It's Abraham Lincoln. He's a surrealist painter. And if you see them in, in picture or on your phone, it doesn't do it justice. You have to see it in person, and it makes a huge difference. So I would recommend you go check his work. Also, Maurice Howard, who's a student of famous artist Charles Bibbs, he is a part of the Art Walk as well. So a, a lot of other local, very, very talented artists are going to be there. We're going to have a balloon artist for the kids and a face painter on Saturday and Sunday. So I know children love that. So bring out your kids, get their faces painted, get them a nice balloon sculpture, and I will see you out there next weekend. Thank you.
Well, I, I just can't tell you how ecstatic I am about the governor vetoing AB-890 because it would have been a devastation to our city. Well, it, not only our city, but our state. So I just want to reiterate that. And I want to thank the community. Over 500 calls to the governor's office to oppose AB-890. Thank you so very much for organizing and getting together and letting the governor know how bad this is. I want to thank my fellow local elected officials in, in Banning, Beaumont, in Paris, and other San Jacinto, different cities, that also called Governor Brown and told him that they were opposed to AB-890. Jeff Stone, Senator Roth, I, I just, you know, there's, there's so many people. It's a litany of people that opposed AB-890. So when we come together, we can do great things. So I just wanted to mention that, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tembaka. I'll just make my comments briefly. I just wanted to thank the staff for the business roundtable. About last week, I had a business roundtable with various businesses, and it was a citywide one, and it was really well-attended. So thank you to the staff, and thank you, Mike, as well, for helping with that, and Alan, as well. I attended the Arttoberfest. It was very well-attended. This year, I think there was more marketing as well, so it was a lot better. I mean, even better, so that's great. I also want to thank Councilmember Carrera for his leadership as well with the film festival, and he's been really working hard on that, and also with the, the Art Walk as well. So please try to come on, on one of those days. I attended Dr. Robin Steinbach's salutatory, actually, I gave the salutatory remarks for Dr. Robin Steinbach. She was installed as the new president. She was actually installed several months ago, but her ceremony was just last week. So she was really excited, and I think she's going to be a great leader for the college. And she already is, and she's a great partner for, with, with the city as well. We're actually working on several grants, one called the Promise Zone Grant. And this is like a $30 million grant from pipeline to, to college to career readiness. So it's going to be, it's going to be a great grant. Hopefully, we can get it. Also, the mayor's challenge as well. They've provided input as well. So she's just really a great, great partner. I also attended and gave some remarks to the malls, actually, at the mall. They have their 25th anniversary. And tomorrow, I'll be presenting the Student of the Month certificates to the students in the school district. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and adjourn at 7:38 PM. Okay, thank you.